Okay. So, great. We've got a great turnout. So, folks are still pouring in. So, just to give you an overview, we're going to have a brief presentation on our reopening plan. And then we'll have a question and answer period. This session will last about an hour. We will make a recording of the session and make it available on our website. As well as answers to questions we may not have gotten time to answer this evening. Again, I point you out to the Q and A section on the bottom. I see folks have found that already. There's no chat feature in this. We will be recording this and I want to take a moment to introduce some of my administrators who are on this town hall with me. And are available to answer questions that I may not be able to answer. And I'll just introduce them and ask them to keep their videos off until I may call on them. Amy Perro is the Assistant Superintendent. Anthony Chirillo is our Assistant Principal for Admissions. Many of you families of incoming freshmen know Mr. Chirillo. Brian Tilsley is our Assistant Principal. Dan O'Brien is our Director of Communications. George Clement, our Principal. Katie Bouchard is our Director of Career and Technical Education. Sarah Bolduc, our school nurse, who's getting a lot of playtime this year. And Rich Eichenin, our Director of With me and will be available to help me answer any questions you might have. In the meantime, I'm going to start a, to share my screen and with a brief presentation. Overview of, of where we are at with our opening plan. So hopefully you can see that. If I could get a thumbs up from one of my panelists, administrators, I'll keep going. I did want to review with folks, you know, Massachusetts is in great shape. I'm sure you're all watching the news, hearing things. The data and the science is showing us that Massachusetts, when measured by positivity rates, is probably one of the better states in the country. You can see over the last few months, our positivity rate has come down. We're about 1.6% as of the first of the month. And when we look at the positivity rates for our member communities, as well as a few of our sending communities, you can see they're all very low. Which is good news and it's trending in this way and it's maintained that trend so far. You may have heard of the governor's map and the colors of red, yellow and green. Obviously, this metric is being watched very carefully. It's updated every Wednesday by town. And we are watching closely this metric in terms of what color the town may be, red, yellow, green, or unshaded. You may also have heard that a number of towns have shifted from one week to another, from in some cases, red to green, green to red. I want to just kind of mention that we're looking at three different metrics and I'll talk a little bit more about those things too. And today in a meeting with the Commissioner and some of his health resources and experts, they advised us to really look at these trends over three weeks. And not make whiplash decisions about closing school and going to a full remote model. Again, this is another look at the town surrounding Minuteman, many of whom our students reside in. And if we have to move to a full remote, we're going to be opening under a hybrid model. We're going to look at these three things, the positivity rates, the infection rates, which are reflected in the map I just showed you. And we're also at school here through consultation with our school physician, the Department of Public Health, of course, our school nurses. We're going to be looking at symptoms that are presenting themselves at school. And if we see more than 3% of the students who are in the building in any one week presenting symptoms, that will be another warning signal for us in regards to considering moving to a remote model. We, my intention is to give all families at least two weeks notice if we are required to move from a hybrid model to a full remote model, unless of course, the governor decides to do something more quickly than that. This was a slide that was given to us months, months ago, it feels like, from the Department of Ed. When they asked us to evaluate three different models for opening school. We had to evaluate and do a feasibility study of starting school full in person. Of course, under all the safety and health guidelines. We had to do a feasibility study of a hybrid model and of course, a full remote model. So when we looked at our full in-person learning model and being able to comply with the guidelines regarding distance and masking and cleaning, we found that this was the most difficult and expensive to implement. One reason is our school was designed for 628 kids and we're going to be welcoming 650 students in a few weeks, not all at once. It also would have cost us about a million dollars more than we had budgeted and more, more staff, more school buses. And numerous retrofits to classroom spaces and other CTE, Career and Technical Education spaces. And physical distancing would have been very difficult to comply with. So the model, hybrid model that and that was approved in the middle of August is one grade is going to be in school full-time, five days a week. The other three grades will be learning remotely. All staff are in this building every day, even those staff that are delivering curriculum remotely. We have a brand new building. Beautiful state-of-the-art HVAC systems. The ability to clean and cohort students along the lines of their career and tech ed programs and really provide an exceptionally safe environment. We are going to continue to provide individualized instruction for our special ed students, depending on what services are outlined in the IEPs. It's really was the best model for us to continue to deliver the full spectrum of courses that we offer in all the levels of courses that we offer, including AP, College Bound, and other classes that we would have had to eliminate if we had gone to a different hybrid model. Again, the full remote model, we're fortunate that we're in the fifth year of a one-to-one device program where all students get a laptop, freshmen will be getting their laptops during the orientation on the ninth and 10th, more information will come out about that. About 5% of our students have asked to have a full remote learning regardless of what model. And we'll be reaching out to those families over the next few days to talk to you about that. And develop the, the program that will fit your needs. As many of you know, we asked you to fill out a survey a while ago, about 80% of the parents responded. And 93% of you supported the hybrid model. 5% will use the all remote, as I just mentioned. 78% less folks were comfortable with a full in-person model, even with safety protocols implemented. So it's for these reasons and this feedback that we really felt the hybrid model was the best and safest way to start school. So, some of the health and safety measures that we've put into place already. Certainly, as you, these are not new to anyone. Wearing a mask in the building is required by staff and students. We've pretty much set up most of the classrooms to be six-foot distance. There's lines on the floor in terms of the direction of traffic. We've put in Plexiglas barriers in certain areas. More hand sanitizing stations, increased cleaning and sanitizing and more. We have developed a video that I want to share with you now. That kind of is an overview of these changes and what the hybrid model looks like. And I'm going to try to play it for you. Here we go. It's coming up.
At Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical High School, our mission is to provide comprehensive career technical education and robust academics. While also ensuring the health and safety of our students, staff and visitors. When you return to Minuteman High School this fall, you're going to notice a few big changes designed to keep you safe. Minuteman is using a hybrid model. That means 25% of the students are in the building and 75% are at home. Each week, one grade will come to school to take classes in their vocational shops. All academics and electives will be taught remotely. By hosting vocational learning in person, Minuteman is adhering to its mission of providing high-quality
So I'm getting emails that you can't see the video. Dan, can you see the video?
Okay.
No, I can't see it.
All right, I apologize. It'll be on a link at, at school, but let me, you can still see the PowerPoint, right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. So the health and safety, in addition to what I've spoken about before, is we're adding a second health office. And this is to really isolate folks that may be exhibiting signs of COVID. We have two plus full-time nurses for 650 students. I use the word plus because we've contracted with an additional nursing service. In case we need some additional coverage during the day, or one of our nurses is unable to be with us. We've developed an internal tracking system for tracking students with symptoms. Invited visitors, and I underline the idea of invited visitors, folks will not be allowed into the building unless they have an appointment. I say that to, to parents as well, as if you're coming to school, please let us know. Anyone who comes, whether they're invited or allowed in, if there's an extenuating circumstance, will have to sign a form attesting to the fact that they haven't been exposed, that they're not exhibiting symptoms. And as I mentioned, the 3% rate of 3% of symptoms. Transportation, there'll only be 25 passengers on the bus. One student per seat. We'll try to seat students from the same household together. If they're on the bus, masks are required on the bus. The windows of the bus will be open. Obviously, if it's bad weather, we won't open those. And the, the bus company that we've contracted with has developed some pretty extensive sanitation procedures, including sanitizing the bus in between every run. So we're asking everyone to do their part. If your child is sick, please keep them home. That requires that, you know, you check in with your student and see how they're doing. Again, hand hygiene, hand sanitizer, mask and face coverings are worn all the time. We will have mask breaks during the day. Where the students are either outside or in a larger space and can be socially distant and have a break from the mask. The symptoms of COVID-19. Over the last few months, the symptoms seem to be growing. And there are a number of symptoms that are very common with some other common illnesses we get in the fall, including the flu and colds and even allergies. So on this slide here, we've kind of listed the COVID symptoms. And you can see how they cross over to some other illnesses. But we want you to be overly conservative. And not assume that the symptom might be something else other than COVID. If you feel like your child is ill or has been exposed to someone showing signs, then keep them home, let us know. And we'll work with you in that circumstance. We have our, much more data on our, on our website under the Fall 2002 Reopening Plan. And I'm going to stop sharing this for a second. So here's the video.
When you return to Minuteman High School this fall, you're going to note
And of course, it stops.
Technical education and robust academics. While also ensuring the health and safety of our students, staff and visitors. When you return to Minuteman High School this fall, you're going to notice a few big changes designed to keep you safe. Minuteman is using a hybrid model. That means 25% of the students are in the building and 75% are at home. Each week, one grade will come to school to take classes in their vocational shops. All academics and electives will be taught remotely. By hosting vocational learning in person, Minuteman is adhering to its mission of providing high-quality career technical education for our students. For academics, Minuteman has invested in additional tools and training to provide a robust and structured learning experience this fall. If you're taking the school bus, only one student will sit on a seat and everyone will wear a mask. Windows will be open to ventilation as often as possible. And students will have access to hand sanitizer. The buses will be cleaned and disinfected between each run. When you're entering the building, wearing a mask is required as well. Just like the aisles in your supermarket, we're controlling traffic flow in the hallways to maintain social distancing. We'll have hand sanitizer stations located at various points around the school. We'll also increase the sanitation of frequently touched surfaces such as doorknobs and handles, stair rails, countertops, light switches, bathrooms and so forth. We're also installing Plexiglas in numerous offices and classrooms. All desks will be spaced six feet apart and facing the same direction. Teachers will be required to wear masks. And all classroom learning will encourage as much social distancing as reasonably possible. In addition to the increased cleaning, a separate health office will be available for anyone exhibiting symptoms. We are closely following all state and federal guidelines, which are posted on minuteman.org. Believe me, despite this challenge, we're still going to make sure our students have a robust and fulfilling school experience this year. We have a lot more information on our website, including details on how we're cleaning our buses and buildings and other protocols. This is a new process for everyone. And we're making sure we're meeting or exceeding all guidelines. This may not be the school year we imagine, but we've all got to do our part to reduce the spread of COVID-19. Know that behind this mask, we're smiling at you. We're welcoming you. We can't wait to see you in September. Good morning, Minuteman!
Okay. I appreciate everyone's patience with our town hall technology here. I'm going to go to the, the Q and A.
And that is actually undercounted nationwide in this pandemic. That is OK, Henderson of Radio Iowa, the news director there. Thank you so much, Kay.
Yes, we were watching PBS. I'm going to go right to the questions and the way this Q and A works is that I'll probably answer these verbally, just because there's so many right now. And then Dan O'Brien will, as I'm answering a question, will kind of scroll through them and see how some of them might be related. Because I have currently 75 open questions in front of me. Let me just go through here. What's expected of students during the orientation day? For example, 12th grade comes in on the 16th. What are the other grades expected to do? During those first few days, if you haven't looked at the calendar, seniors come in on the 16th. Juniors come in on the 17th and sophomores come in on the 18th. All students will be expected to log on and there'll be some remote connection on those couple of days, but we'll be sending you more information on that. If any of my administrators want to unmute themselves and just help me answer a question if I'm not getting complete, please do. Seniors on co-op, are they expected to go in every fourth week or do they go to work as it was a normal year? When the seniors come in on the 16th, we're going to be discussing co-op options at that point in time. There may be some options for our seniors who are already out on co-op. For them to work a little bit more on co-op, but they will be going to co-op on a regular basis. For early ed students today. There's a question, I don't understand that question, we'll come back to it. If a student misses CT week, will they be able to make it up by going another week? That's a great question and in by making up the week, can they come into school outside of the week they're scheduled to come into? And the answer to that is no. They would not be able to come another week when, say, the sophomores were in and this student is a junior. We are looking at opening the school and offering some CTE time on Saturdays. We received a grant to do some work on Saturdays and during February vacation for students who need to make up some academics as well as some CTE. How will students get extra support should they start following, fa, of falling behind in a class? During the week where they are on-site, where they're fully in-person, there is time during the day for students to receive extra help in person. And if that extra help needs to continue during the remote week, we have our special ed staff and others who will make arrangements to do that. It's real important if you feel like your student's falling behind that you let us know. Let the guidance counselor know, or your special ed liaison, or whoever you're most comfortable talking with at the school. Will the cafeteria be open for lunch sales? Yes. Can you tell us when we're going to get back to in-person education? I cannot tell you that now, although that's what we all long for. A CTE experience is not a remote experience. This is not going to be as good as it could be in a normal school year, but we're all doing what we can. You may cover the, wondering how the CTE teachers will teach two grades at a time. That's a good question because we have a few CTE programs where we only have one teacher. Most of them have two teachers and, and, and more. So while one teacher is dealing with students in person, and you remember, they're going to be very small groups of students. The other teacher would be teaching remotely from their related classroom or another space in the building. Those shops that have one teacher, we do have technical assistants that will cover the shop in person for a time when the CTE teacher may be checking in remotely with the students who are in remote CTE week. When and how will students receive their schedule? All students should have had, received their schedule if they have access to Aspen. If someone else has a better answer than that, please type it in the Q and A.
Dr. B.
Yes, George.
Yep, the freshmen will have their schedule mailed to them because we understand that they don't have full credentials yet. Or have, have accessed Aspen yet, which is what they will do when they come in for orientation. But returning students should, absolutely should be able to access their schedule through Aspen. And we know that they are because they're already requesting schedule changes and little tweaks. So I would encourage folks to just look into Aspen. And if otherwise, you need a paper copy or you're having some difficulty, please contact my office or your guidance counselor and we will get you what you need.
Thanks, George. Another question says, is there a possibility Minuteman might increase the in-person learning frequency? Of course, that's our hope. We, we're not going to be able to do that on our own. Unless you know, we have students from 35 communities. And given that large a district and that diverse number of towns and cities, it's unlikely that we'd go to a greater in-person learning on our own at this point in time. My sense is we're going to be in some form of a hybrid model for a long time. Do you foresee the students going back to school full-time? I think I just eighth graders who want to look at the school, Anthony, do you want to say anything about our marketing and recruiting and our open houses and career days?
Hey, yeah, so we will be hosting scheduled private tours daily, just for one family at a time to reduce exposure. And all the same protocols will be followed that any visitor to the building would have and they won't actually go into the shops, but we're lucky that we have such a beautiful building. Shops from the outside. We do have an open house again. Space will be limited and we will follow all guidelines there. And we're looking at some other opportunities on weekends. The open house would be a weekend, but other weekend opportunities for people to get a look at the school in action. And in terms of like, you know, when we usually reach out to, or go out to schools like we did for all the upperclassmen who are here, we're going to be producing some digital content to get out to our sending school families. But if anyone's on here that knows people who are interested, please have them contact the admissions office. We'll get them set up on anything we can directly.
Thank you. George, is a question upon the expectation on the amount of time spent for online classroom studies with the teacher and the amount of time spent on homework per subject.
Well, we're expecting students, you know, we'll, we'll focus really on academics. We're expecting students to log in at the start of class. We're expecting teachers to, and students to be engaged for the full 45 minutes. Now what? What that engagement will look like, it will, that's the art of remote, remote teaching. So you could have where there's, you know, 10 or 15 minutes of a teacher. You know, presenting some material and then they say, okay, I'm going to break you into groups, which we can do digitally and they're working and you know, the, this, so they may not be interacting necessarily with the teacher. The teacher may be working with one group, all three other groups are working. But the intention is that it's a 45-minute session and that they should be doing something. You know, for all of those 45 minutes, it, like I said, it may look a little different from class to class, but that's really pretty normal. That's what any, you'd see in any classroom situation with that. What was the other half of the question, Dr. B?
I think you answered it.
Okay, yep. So it's, it's a full, it's a full session. Kids are expected to be there from beginning to end.
I'm going back. Homework.
Oh, yeah, homework. That's also the art of Minuteman. You know, I get, I used to get asked this question a lot in the admissions world and, you know, I would say, well, we really allow our teachers to decide on what they want to give for homework. We never, we've never been a place that's come up with a you know, some dictum to say, you know, you must have 20 minutes per class because if you, if we're being honest, it's really difficult to measure what does 20 minutes of homework look like or 30 minutes of homework because every kid processes different. You know, that's really impossible. So really let the teachers decide. You know, how much I will tell you that it will depend You know, how much I will tell you that it will depend a little bit on if you're in honors, you should expect more. If you have more supported classes. Perhaps it's a little less, but it really, it's going to depend a bit on the teacher, just like we, we always do. So in general, it's high school, expect homework, the amount, the, the frequency and the intensity will, will vary. And sometimes it's by courses and sometimes that's by teachers and, you know. We, I always point to the blue ribbon medallion up on the wall and say, we've been that way and it has been very effective. You know, I think our teachers have a great handle on our kids and, and how much and what's the appropriate push, so, but expect homework.
Sophomores. Everyone has been scheduled, so the answer is yes, they should have selected their courses. What will remote learning look like? It depends on the class, the CTE class as well as the academic class. It will be a combination. Of asynchronous synchronous self-guided along with homework and projects. IEP services will be delivered. We obviously, if you're going to be working remotely, if your student's going to be remotely, we have to work with you about how that happens. Teachers are required to come into the building and teach remotely. With all the lost time last spring, how are seniors going to finish their OSHA certifications and other coursework? That's a great question of great concern of all of ours. That's why I mentioned earlier that we do have some opportunity to do some Saturday makeup work. Some of the licensing organizations for cosmetology, plumbing and electrical have accepted some online learning. In terms of the hours towards license. I don't extend that very far. This is a real problem for a lot of students, especially seniors. So we're hoping to offer some Saturday sessions in addition to the week that they're here and work with the students to get them through. Yes, I see a lot of questions. We answered that. A lot of you are telling me you can't see the video. Thank you. I was nervous because there's like a hundred and seventy-two questions and. If we want to set up a learning pod at home for the remote learning experience, can we get any information about other students who might be in same classes? And are interested in also doing this. You know, that's, we, that's a pretty cool idea. We're, we're pretty limited in the kind of information we can give out to families about other families. I would suggest that you maybe work through the Minuteman Parent Association and try to connect with families in your community about doing that. And we would, you know, be supportive of that. Supposed to be, oh boy. Make one little mistake with the thing. Has the bus schedule been completed yet? I believe it has. Mr. Telsley, can you? Unmute? And give us any more information about that?
Yep, sure I can. So tomorrow we're going to be releasing the freshman schedule first. It's ready to go. I saw it tonight. Needs to be tweaked just a bit, so the freshman will have this first and then shortly after everybody else. We're going to. We're going to actually have four different routes. So we're going to have a freshman route, sophomore, junior and a senior. And they should be available very shortly. My plan is to get them out directly to the freshman parents. Before this time tomorrow.
Thank you, Brian. If we drive our kids to, to and from school, can we decide to put them on the bus? Every once in a while, do we need to give warning to the school? I would say we do. Brian, we've had this discussion.
Yeah, we, in the past, we've been, we've been flexible for students who need to work in jobs. But in the COVID world, we're going to ask that if that does happen, that you notify either myself or Ms. Mixon and we can make the arrangement. We just need to be a little bit more tight in this situation with the, with the restrictions on the bus, but as long as you communicate it, we'll make it work.
Thank you. Someone missed the pickup day for the yearbook. I think if you just call the school and let. Ms. Mixon know or Mrs. Murphy or Mrs. Romano will have it for you at the. At the front desk. Will students feeding lunch in their shops or will students from all shops become in the same area? That's another good question. We have a, we've, you may have seen in the video that we reorganized the student union, which is where students eat. And I think our capacity is about fifty, fifty-six there. I think for the most part, we're planning on students to eat in their shop areas. There may be some shops that moved, I don't know, we figured that out, George?
Yeah, actually we did. We were, Brian and I have been working on breaking down. Looking at every grade, the numbers in every shop so that we can, and we figured out that really we can, we found some additional seating. You know, up and around the student union that, that is acceptable. When you put it all together, we had about sixty-seven spots. That we can put kids in and we've broken it into three different lunches in the student union. So that's what, that's what we'll have.
Here's a question for Katie, perhaps our director of CTE. Can you provide more detail on how the compression of exploratory will work for freshmen? Katie, can you turn your video on and I unmuted you?
Yep, sure. So we're going to be running the exploratory in three weeks. The way that's going to work is the first week, they are going to have the opportunity to explore all of Minuteman's programs. After they go through all of the programs, they're going to pick five shops that they would like to revisit. And we'll be able to schedule them for four of them, keeping in mind their top couple that they'd like to go see. So they're going to return to those programs for two and a half days each. Then at the end of that three-week period, they would then put forward their top choice and then. That would become their shop major, you know, looking at grades and making sure that students can, you know, get into those programs.
Great, thanks. How will science lab work be conducted? Well, obviously when they're here, they'll be in the labs. There are some different resources we've been identifying to do some online lab-related work. Some of them are fairly sophisticated, some are just online lessons, so it'll be a combination. Of onsite, hands-on lab work and. Some of the remote learning systems that we've identified in academics as well as some of the CTE areas. Will it be possible for students who are in shop with garage doors to come in and out of the garage doors? Last I knew, we weren't going to allow that. I don't know if that's changed, George.
Yeah, they're not, we're not going to allow them to enter in through the garage doors. We feel like we've, you know, with one grade coming in and buses coming in on a probably naturally staggered basis. We should be able to have kids enter the building without, you know, one big huge mass of kids coming in. We plan on, we've, we've worked out a, really a filing system with the assistant principals of how we're going to guide kids in and. And through the building. So they're going to enter through the front. When they arrive to school. However, when they leave at the end of the day, that's, that's the time when we will allow them to. Exit out the back through their shops. That's okay because that would. Otherwise, we are inviting a huge crowd trying to get through the front, you know, main staircase in the front. And that'll really dissipate the, you know, that whole, that, you know, that whole worry and they'll be instantly outside. So they can exit through the back, but they can't enter through the back.
Thank you. Have teachers been? Learning how to identify students who may be struggling with remote aspects of school? Well, we're on a ten days of professional development and we have had some teachers participate over the summer in. Classes and workshops and seminars about how to keep kids engaged in a remote learning environment. So the answer is yes. And we're going to be continuing to learn how to do that better. Through these next few weeks and throughout the year. Are there any plans for randomly testing students throughout the year? No, there are no plans for that. Sarah, this may be a question for you. Can you walk us through all the steps? Of what happens if a student actually tests positive? How will we be notified? I'm assuming we is the greater Minuteman community. And will there be contact tracing? I see you're unmuted, Sarah, if you want to answer that.
Sure. Hi, everybody. So if someone tests positive, we ask that you please notify us. And we're going to work with the local board of health in the town in which you live. To decide on if there's any close contacts within the building. That be staff or other students will take into account if your child rides the bus. And then those close contacts will be notified and guidelines will be given to them. Regarding testing and quarantining and when they can return back to school. And again, we'll just be in close contact with that local board of health nurse to determine. When your child or the staff member can return back to school safely.
Great, thank you. If your child's going on co-op, does that mean they never come to school? No, they need to come to school. The first day for seniors is the sixteenth. I'm assuming your child is a senior. And we'll have more detailed about how they check in, when they check in and who they check in with, but. No. Will juniors be able to go on a co-op? Now, we thought we were going to get some relief on that from the Department of Ed and. And juniors will not be able to go on a co-op any earlier than they normally do. There are some. Guidance that we have not received from the Department of Ed, from the career tech ed folks there. It could be possible late in the spring if they met certain criteria. What's the best way to get my EpiPen and meds to the nurse? Like Sarah, I guess we just bring, you bring them in.
So again, we, as they've, as Dr. B mentioned earlier, anyone. That needs to come into the building has to have an appointment with us. So we just ask that you send us an email. We can be reached at nurse. At minuteman.org. You can find our contact information on the Minuteman website as well. But yeah, we just ask that you reach out to us ahead of time this year, so we can set up a time that's convenient for you to come in and drop things off. When it comes to EpiPens and inhalers, we do ask that the students carry them themselves this year, especially with the rotating schedule. And if, God forbid, we have to close the school, at least they would have those supplies with them at home in the event of an emergency. So if you can try and plan ahead this year and talk to your child's. Primary care providers to get those prescriptions before school starts, that would be great.
Thanks. Here's a very simple, interesting question. How are we going to get the kids to keep their masks on? Well, one of the things we realized, we had summer school, some of you had your students here at summer school for a week and we were very impressed. With the commitment that the kids demonstrated in, in keeping everyone safe and healthy. We do have a policy going to the school committee around wearing masks. And we don't anticipate we're going to have problems. If we do, we'll deal with those students on an individual basis. Amy, there's a couple of questions that I could probably use your help on. One. I unmuted you if you have, there you go. There's sort of two questions together. When will it be decided if some high-risk students will need to be in the building? And how are the students on IEPs going to be handled, I think?
All right, so the first question is if there is a high-risk student that needs more support or more in-person support. You would contact your liaison and we would have a meeting and we would decide what that looks like. It's going to be specific in individual, individualized per student, so it's not, there's not a blanket. Program. It'll be individualized for each student. All of our app, all of our IEP services, academic support, counseling, speech and language, all of that can be done. Remotely. So we are planning on. Covering every service in every IEP in a combination of either remote or in-person. And again, that will depend on the student and the student's needs.
Thank you. What will be happening with college applications? Will there be Zoom calls to help apply? Well, while the students here in person, there's an opportunity to meet with their guidance counselor to kind of review those procedures. And we certainly have gotten. Pretty good at using Microsoft Teams to have meeting. We don't use Zoom during the school day. We use Microsoft Teams. If you need technical help, you can call. Our Geek Squad or just call the school and talk with Victor Woodruff, the IT director. We have worked with a lot of families in upgrading computers over the summer. And we want to make sure we have that done. So thanks for that question and you need to call us. The bus schedule, we talked about that. Lunch. Screen time breaks. And this kind of relates to another question someone had about the time of online learning classes. Certainly one thing we learned in the spring. Was that, you know, screen fatigue can set in and teachers need to kind of be aware of that. And, you know, we're not expecting teachers to kind of stand and deliver for forty-five minutes in front of their screen. It has to be a sort of a little bit more engaging, a little bit more diverse in how curriculum is delivered. And we're going to be, I don't want to say we're going to be lenient, but we're going to be flexible. In how that's scheduled during the remote learning week goes, especially when it's the CTE learning week. Are there Plexiglas dividers on the buses? They're, not that I have seen, no. Someone's asking about full remote and orient. Where do students go when they enter? First thing in the morning, George? Their, their schedule has them going to their shop, I believe, right?
Yes, they go right, they go right to the shop if they get there. If the bus does end up coming in a little bit early, the, the waiting station. We're pulling out all the bleachers in the gym and we have markers six feet apart across on the, on the bleachers. And that's where the kids will wait, but hopefully this is a really good bus company. We really try to emphasize, you know, we don't want a bus there at seven-ten. We need it to be really close to the, you know, to the start of school and, you know, we can take care of it from there. They'll go right to the gym if they're early or right to their CTE program.
Someone's asking about remote live, live streaming. I think I mentioned that. It depends on the course, the class. It'll be a combination of live, remote streaming and. Where computers are provided. Yes, they're pretty robust. Laptops, they're not Chromebooks. We don't use those. We had, we ordered them early and they're all in, ready for freshmen and new students to pick up. Absentee, the absence policy. Will the hybrid model? Allow some flexibility with the number of days that students are absent? George might be able to fill in, but the Department of Ed has made it clear to us and to every school district across the state that we have to take attendance. Whether the student is remotely learning or in person. And the standards for attendance have not been lowered by the Department of Ed. They've been clarified and there may be some changes in that as we go through the year. But the, the policy itself, unless it has not been changed or. The expectations have not been changed.
That is correct, yep.
Will, will there be instructions on how to use Aspen and MS Teams for parents and students? We've, we've had some training sessions already. We'll continue to have those. One of the things we're going to be doing, those first few days are making sure that everyone. Has got Aspen properly installed, that they have the correct access credentials. That they're using their Minuteman email. And yes, there will be training. I don't know if we've had any training specifically for parents yet. I know we've talked about it. We haven't scheduled it yet though, have we?
No, we haven't scheduled it yet. We're, you know, the first order is to make sure that the new students, particularly the freshman class, has everything in working order. And once we know that they have that, that the student's part is running, we'll be sending home to the freshman parents all the credentials that they need to be able to log in. And then, you know, then we'll be working with Aspen and our data specialist to figure out a good time for a parent orientation. But one of the changes that we made, which should accelerate the learning curve or flatten the learning curve, is this year, we're a lot, we have set up Aspen so that what a student sees and what a parent sees is exactly the same thing. In fact, they're going to share credentials. So we want total transparency. So when a grade is entered, the student sees it, the parent sees the exact same looks. There was absolutely no confusion. We had some of that last year where, you know, the screens just look different. They're set up different and parents sometimes struggle. Now, it should be, if we do our job well, students should be able to help their parents figure out, this is what you do because it's the same thing.
Are all teachers going to utilize the same programs for remote classes? Or will each teacher use something different? We, teachers will all be using Microsoft Teams. Zoom is not allowed. Skype is not allowed. And the reason is security. And there may be some different online resources depending on the CTE program you're in. But in regards to delivering the majority of our learning, it's going to happen through Microsoft Office Teams. Will teachers be offering office hours through Microsoft Teams? I don't, I don't know. That's a great question.
We've, we're working with the union. We're talking of in-person after-school extra help, that that would function as office hours. Although there's some need for, you know, there's some concern about making sure that we have time to sharpen our own technology skills. So we're trying to work out a system, but I think that's going to be in there. It's that we are going to have some form of office hours instead of the traditional, you know, you're after school and, you know, meeting with your teacher, you're just going to do it virtually.
Will there be early ed co-op options for seniors? Yes. Is there any potential for academics in-person later in the school year? It really depends upon the data and the science. We certainly hope so. Is it an option to be in school for academics to be in school? I think I just answered that. What will remote classes consist of? Will it include new materials? Yes. The class will be a little bit shorter than the same amount of time as in-person. Just understanding that teachers and kids kind of need a break in between. So that's where I talked about the flexibility. Let's go into eighth graders. We talked about that. Do freshmen need to be, this, no. Do freshmen need to be dressed for shop on orientation day? No. In other words, work boots and jeans, if they just come in like it's a normal school day, we're not going to be doing any work in the shops on those days. Are freshmen being required to declare their CTE major earlier? Yeah, we expect it by November. Lunch will look the same. I think Amy answered that. Someone's asking about when juniors start online. It would be September 21st. The calendar that went out with Mr. Clement's letter and some other information. How will senior projects be handled if students will only be in shop for one week per month? Katie, you want to take that one?
Yep. Senior projects are, we're finalizing right now the senior project manual. But it's going to be, you know, the same expectations that we had in terms of students establishing their project. They can work on it when they're in their remote week, when they're in the building. We'll also be offering check-in sessions throughout the remote week to help students kind of continue the progress even when they're not in the building.
Okay. Someone asked if they could send their lunch funds in for kids during the CTE week. I think it's the same process as last year. Was that in, so we believe it's the same process.
They should have received some information from Lucille Barker. She sent some out. We're sending some out. And if you really get stuck, just contact our office and we'll help you out.
Someone asked if a student needs extra support during the CTE week. Well, we've built into the schedule time out of shop for students to receive extra academic support. Will there be more flexibility if some, if a student's not happy with their exploratory decision in November? And I would say, yeah, there's always been some flexibility in that. We'll work with the student if they feel like they want to be in a different shop. I will warn everyone, though, that we have a lot of, we have a lot more students than we normally have. And exploratory, sometimes students will select shops that have many more students selecting them than there's room for in that shop. And the way that a student gets their first choice is by performing well in all aspects of school. So it's important that whatever shop they choose, that they do well in all the shops that they're exploring as well in their academics. We've got about a minute or so left. I'm just scrolling through. And a lot of these questions are. Someone says, what do you mean by CTE Remote Week? I thought all CTE is done on campus. All CTE is done on campus, but only one grade is on campus at a time. So a freshman or a sophomore, that really means students are only in-person in school one week a month. There will be summer school next year for sure. Well, I appreciate all the questions. We're coming to the end of our time. There's a question about Middlesex Community College. I think you're speaking around the dual enrollment classes. Those will be offered in this model. Snow days, here's a great one. Will those just be 100% remote to stay on the calendar? It appears that snow days will be considered remote days so that we would really not have any snow days that would end up extending the calendar in June. Will testing be provided in the event of symptoms? We've heard from the governor and the commissioner that if there is a number of cases in a particular school district that the governor, through the Department of Public Health, will marshal up the resources to provide additional testing. That's a decision that we don't make as an individual district in most cases. But certainly, if the testing and the data shows that we're moving in a bad direction in terms of infection rate or symptoms, that we would be working with our local Department of Public Health to take some action. How will you promote student interaction and connection? Are clubs or other social events being offered? We're really, we're hoping, yes, virtually, of course. As you may know, and I'm surprised I haven't gotten any questions about it, fall sports is canceled for the fall. With the exception of golf, we may be having a golf team. But the other kinds of after-school activities are really important for a student's social and emotional growth. And we're looking at how we can do things virtually. We've looked at starting or expanding a gaming club. There's a lot of stuff around esports on college campuses now. We're also looking at what could coaches of teams do with students who wanted to be on the team, the soccer team or the football team or track? Are there some things we could do anyway to kind of create a sense of team? So there are like 256 questions. I have no idea how many of them I've gotten through, but we're going to. Those of you that have put your name in here with the questions, if it looks like we need to reach out to you individually, we will. And then we'll use these questions to come out with it. We'll update our frequently asked questions and try to put it out to you in a few days. I encourage you to, if you haven't read all the pages on the website, to do that. The mailings that we did in the last, we've been mailing something home, it seems like, every week. And we'd encourage you to look through those. And we will get the answers to you. Does the HVAC system support the recommended MERV 13 filters? Yes, it does. We just recently changed all our filters and we've ordered MERV 13 filters. But as you can imagine, they're on back order. Will cosmetology in the restaurant be available to the public? They will be at some point in the fall, but on a very limited basis and in complete compliance with what any business, any restaurant would have to follow, any nail salon, a hair salon, we will be following all of those protocols. But the occupancy would be limited and the number of clients would be limited. Will a student's graduation be affected if they opt out of in-person learning? You know, that's, that's a really good question. Ops out of in-person learning in a vocational technical school? There are things that you cannot do virtually in most vocational technical training areas. Graduation would be affected if the student didn't meet graduation requirements. Graduation requirements are intimately entwined within the credentialing and the certifications that we provide students who graduate from individual CTE programs. I'm not sure how long an in-person, or if you opt out of in-person learning, how long a vocational school can serve your child's needs remotely. It's a very serious question that I don't take lightly. I take it very seriously, as you can tell. If you're, if you're not going to send your child here for the whole year, you know, why are you coming to a vocational school? That sounds harsh, but it's true. There may be another school that serves your child better than we can because we're a vocational technical school. Students will be provided with masks if they don't have any. Nursing health and nursing group may or may not be able to go to some off-site clinical sites. The Department of Ed is providing some guidance on that. Newly licensed, can they apply for a parking permit? Yes. Attendance will be taking at the beginning of every class in the morning. I think we talked about absences. If you have a new student entering school and you haven't gotten your laptop, please call the school and make an appointment to pick it up. Otherwise, it would be, if he's a junior, it would be on the 17th of September. He would receive it then. Any student driving to school needs a parking permit? Mr. Tillsley is in charge of that.
Yep, we got plenty of spots and as long as we fill out the permit, we should be in good shape.
Someone asked about the shop choice plan. That is written in our admissions policy, which is online off the website. The disinfecting protocols after one group leaves a classroom shop before the next group enters. It's disinfected, but we have very few classrooms where there are groups of kids going in and out of during the day. The only places that's really happening is in the shops. And the kids come in in the morning and they really don't leave. The same cohort of kids is in the same place all day long for the most part. That's why this hybrid model is, has been adopted. Will teachers be tested for COVID-19? We are, teachers who show symptoms are encouraged to get a test, but the district is not requiring all teachers to be tested prior to the school. Okay. Can we change our mind and go from remote to hybrid? Yes, you certainly can. We would just need to have time to make that adaptation with you. Why is the freshman exploratory being compressed so much? That's a great question. One of the, one of the strengths of Minuteman is the relationships that kids build and the connection they feel to their CTE program. Once someone gets through exploratory and chooses that shop, they're there for three and a half years. Given this strange environment we're in and the limited amount of time that kids are having in the building to really see what shops are like, we want them to make a decision earlier so that they get connected with that shop earlier, with those, with the other students who are in there, even though they're not going to see them for a while. We really feel like that connection, that relationship is important to establish early so that those CTE teachers and the other staff that are associated with that shop can get to know the students earlier and deeper and longer as we go through this hybrid year. And as was mentioned earlier, if the student feels like they need to make a change, we'll work with them to do that. There's been some, this is a good question, too. I'm going over. If people need to leave, I understand. There's some news about Legionnaire Disease cases because schools were closed for a long time. Is this a concern for Minuteman? It's a concern for any building that's been closed any period of time. Rich Iaconin and I discussed this a while ago. And we've had the building tested for Legionella and it was negative. We're going to test it again because we just want that certainty. Will all remote work be done on a computer? There will be project-based learning that would probably involve some work remotely that's not directly on a computer. There may be a construction project or another kind of project that a student's doing if they're in horticulture or landscaping, maybe it's something outside. So not all remote work is sitting like this. What sort of daily COVID screening will students and families need to do? Will there be an app for this? I haven't seen an app for it. But on our presentation, we listed sort of the symptoms that you ought to be looking for. And if your child is exhibiting any of those, or you're not sure, we'd ask you to keep them home. Will there be field trips? Field trips are going to be very, very limited. It depends where they're going. If an environmental group of students wants to go to a remote place where there's no other people and there's not a lot of them because our little buses will only hold seven or eight students under the new guidelines, it's going to be pretty problematic. Will the students use lockers? Students that are, yes, all students are assigned lockers and they will be used. Students who are already in a CTE program, their locker is in their shop. They do not share lockers. Students who are already in a CTE program, their locker is in their shop. They do not share lockers. No. So clarification on. Uh, seniors on co-op required to come to the building during their in-person shop week. On, we're gonna have, uh, uh, students who are on co-op are gonna get their own set of, uh, instructions the first day they're here on the sixteenth. Can students request changes? Yes. Are the, we do not have Chromebooks. Um, we do, uh, we are able to monitor what students are doing on the laptops for the most part. Freshmen only come in one of the two days. We'll send you, um, information on who's coming on what day. It'll probably done, be done by town, um, for the most part. The student parking lot is gonna be set up the way it is set up. We're not doing anything differently out there. We have very few, uh, folks driving at this point in time. Freshman will come right into the building for orientation. Um, curriculum night will be remote this year. Uh, we're still working through what the best way to do that is. It may not all be in. At one particular time, it is gonna be a little bit longer this year, so. Um, more families will get a chance to meet the teachers. We're thinking about doing group kinds of things, since we're gonna be doing it remotely. That doesn't give you the one-on-one time you want with your child, but, um, there are other ways that we can, uh, facilitate that. Uh, parents are asking for refresher training on Aspen, George. Parents are asking about what school supplies they may need to purchase. I don't know if we send that out.
Yeah, I think.
Is it in Aspen?
I think, uh, Anthony might have sent, Mr. Chirialo might, might have sent that out. I know we, I remember making a list. I know we, um, used to have it on the website and we refreshed the website. It may have. You know, been bounced around, but we do have a, a small list of supplies, but, you know, really, um, it's, you need your. Device, which we'll be giving you and then, you know, the, the other supplies are really. Now gonna be tailored to whatever your individual student wants. Some kids are very computer savvy and. That computer is enough. Some kids still need paper to scratch things out on and highlighters and all that. That works for you, you know, certainly do that. We can put, I'll, I'll double check on that list. I don't know. I said, I thought we might have done that, but we'll make sure we get something up.
Someone asks about MCAS. At this point in time, the commissioner has not, um, jettisoned. MCAS, we are still preparing students for that. If someone opts to do CTE remotely, can they change their mind at some point not to come to CTE the one week? We would need to know that, but yes.
If any student, Dr. Bev chooses that, I mean, right now it's. Just contact who you're comfortable with. You can call my office, you can call Cheryl mixing guidance, your sped liaison. Um, and we are, we're all working together. We're working off, um, shared document to track. Those requests, uh, for kids who decide that they wanna go for remote, so just let us know. And then we'll let, we'll make all the, um, notions in the Aspen system so that we know what to expect where you are. And then we'll take it from there.
Uh, just to reiterate, there's one week of in-person CTE and one week of remote CTE. And two weeks of remote academics and electives. I'm sorry, I'm sorry if I misspoke there or confused someone. We talked about that, okay. Will freshmen have English and math during CTE in-person week?
No. They will have it remotely, but not during the CTE in-person week.
Which is a big change for us. Cohort, cohorts eating together in the student union, that will be greatly minimized. It would, it will not be, um, the norm. Will we need a printer at home for coursework? I would assume, yes. If you, if you need a printer, let us know. Laptops are running Windows, yes. The bus will be available on orientation day. Can a student use their own computer instead of the school-provided machine? In most cases, no. Uh, excellent presentation. Thank you. Some people didn't get mailings. If you didn't get a mailings, please call, leave a message or email George or myself.
Mm-hmm, we should, they should have received an email in the mailing. Uh, that's at, still at the printer. We checked today, so it should be hopefully this weekend. Uh, an actual physical mailing of a lot of documents will arrive.
So I guess I'll, I'll repeat this again. Maybe I'm not making myself clear. The hybrid model that we are starting school with is one week full in-person learning. For one grade of students at a time. The schedule was sent out yesterday in terms of the weeks and how those weeks are, uh, organized over the school year. September twenty-one is the first full week of in-person CTE learning, and that's for freshmen. Learning from home. There will be a CTE remote week, which will be very different than the CTE in-person week. And it'll depend on the. The CTE program they're in, but they will have activities to do remotely for CTE during that remote week. Um, some folks are talking about concerns about their bandwidth at home. Um, we can try to help with that, too. We worked with Verizon in the spring. When we were kinda ripped out of the building in March to set up more robust hotspots in certain areas and certain homes. Um, Verizon had a program for that. Um, please let us know and we will work with you to, to make sure you have the bandwidth at home to sustain remote learning. I realize that. Many of you have, may have more than one child home. With more than one device, with maybe a dozen devices, counting everything. Okay, so, um, I think I've gotten through, I've done as best I can. There are two hundred and ninety questions. And, uh, we're gonna review the questions and make sure that we update our frequently asked questions and we'll get them out to you. Um, I wanna thank all my administrators for being here, certainly wanna thank the attendees. If you didn't see, there were, at one point, there were about three hundred and sixty-five attendees, which is great. Um, but we probably have more of these as we go through the year and certainly if things change. If our model has to adapt, uh, we will, uh, keep you in the loop. It's not gonna be an easy year. It's gonna be the year, um, we have. Um, and we're gonna all, I know all my staff is doing the best they possibly can. Um, and. Stay safe and be well.